President Byrne.
Here.
Trustees Cook.
Here.
Oppenheim.
Here.
Tacaoka.
Here.
Brown. Here. Schultz.
Here.
Marport.
Here.
We have a core of present, would everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any citizens that wish to address the board? Okay. Very nice.
So we are from the Midwest Veterans.
If you could pick up a mic or just those mics, they're fine.
We're from the Midwest.
That's not working. You gotta hit the button. You wanna just use the mics that are on?
Yeah, why don't you go around.
Go around.
Can you hear me? The other side and face this way so the camera will get you.
Mike Storewell, why do we have a hard time?
Those microphones take about 10 seconds to warm up.
Well, maybe that'll.
We're gonna give it to the President.
Okay.
Roger Byrne. So, good evening, we're from the Midwest Veterans Closet and we're here to thank the Village Board for hosting us for your Oktoberfest this year. Rather than send a letter, we thought we, our team would come and thank you in person. It, it means a lot to us. We serve over 550 active duty military and veterans a month with everything from food to furniture, so we thank you very much. I love my jersey and they're all jealous, so we have to get them one too. But we would like to present you with a certificate of appreciation. To the Village, to the President.
To the Village Hall, the Village President.
Yes. We can, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, good seeing you.
Don't be schmoozing now, get outta here.
So who here is a veteran?
John.
Wow, that's great. And we have, we have veterans with us too. We'd like to thank you for our freedoms. We would especially like to thank John Petrello. John has, he began a coat drive for the Midwest Veterans Closet to provide coats for our military. We're in our fifth year now of doing that, even though he's not spearheading it, they're continuing his tradition, so thank you, John, for that.
And I would also like to thank him very much too, cuz he been a blessing in my life. Just by seeing his face, it keeps me outta a lotta trouble. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Next is the appointment of Todd Renahan to the Police Pension Board. You need a. Are we gonna wait then, or?
No, Todd is not here, the appointment is yours, you need to make a motion to appoint him, have it approved by the Board, and then they have a pension board meeting tomorrow where he will be sworn in by the attorney representing the pension board.
Okay.
So tonight, we need your motion.
Motion to approve the appointment?
Second.
Correct.
Motion is second, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Oppenheim.
Aye.
Tacaoka.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries. So I take it, you'll, Chief, you'll let him know?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Yeah, Todd's lived in town for a long time, Todd's a veteran, but he's also, you know, got a background in finance, so he should be a welcome new member to that Board.
And he was at one point in his life, he was a policeman.
That's right, yeah.
I don't think I knew that.
Okay. All right. Next is Assistant Village Manager, Senior Citizen Committee Elections.
Thank you, Mayor. According to the bylaws of the Vernon Hills Senior Organization, officers of the organization shall be President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer. The President and Treasurer shall be recommended for election in the same year. The organization recently conducted its election for these positions and the names are being forwarded to the Village Board for formal recognition this evening. The seniors have elected Mr. David Beckman for President and Mr. Efrain Cotella for Treasurer. Congratulations to both. At this time, I would also like to acknowledge Ms. Grace Michael, who has served in the capacity for President since 2013. Her service to the senior organization and community is very much appreciated. Per protocol, I would like to invite Grace to appear before the Village Board at the November 19th Board Meeting, at which time she could be recognized with a proclamation for her six years of service as President of the seniors' organization. We wish Mr. Beckman and Mr. Cotella well as they begin their new terms. And if anyone is interested in joining the organization, information is available on the website, keyword seniors, or they can visit the front desk staff. There's a picture from today of both after the election in just a very special moment, and we'll put that on the website and share that on our e-news with Lynn. But a great organization serving a great community.
Okay. Well, congratulations to them, and we'll see Grace on the 19th.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item is Proposed 2020 Road Rehab Program. Public Works Director, Village Engineer Dave Brown.
Thank you very much. It's that time of year that we start preparing our road program for the following year. We prepare the plans in-house and wanted to get Board direction in terms of next year's program. As you can see on your monitor, there's three subdivisions that we're looking at. We're looking at Sugar Creek Subdivision, the rest of Hawthorne Club, and then Old Grove Farms, and then an extension of West Moreland. In terms of the cost of the project for this year, we're right around $1 million. $1 million keeps us at about a 25-year life cycle for the pavement. Kind of forecasting where we're headed from here, this is the proposed project for this coming year. The following year, we would be going and doing the federal project, which is Hawthorne, Lakeview, going across all the way to the post office, and then the, we have one last year after that, that we will be working south of 60, some of the older streets that are in 1995 vintage, and then the year after that, we're gonna be tackling a lot of Greg's Landing streets. You know, some of the first streets in Greg's Landing were installed 1997, 1998, so do the math, we're not too far behind on that 25-year cycle. So just really wanted concurrence from the Board that we can move forward with these streets and answer any questions should you have them.
Who is the contractor this year?
Peter Baker.
They did a real nice job, they did my street this year, and they did a real nice job. Kudos.
I, I appreciate that, and also, last year was the first year we reached out to two other communities, so we're partnering with, again, Mundeline and Libertyville. Libertyville Township worked with us last year. They won't be participating this coming year, but we will be bidding out in a joint bid with two other communities, we get better pricing with that, and it's beneficial, and it proved beneficial last year, and thank you for the compliment on our contractor.
Any other questions for Dave? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next is the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through I? So made.
Mr. President, if you would, I'd like to pull item I and discuss that separately.
Oh, okay. All right, well.
The first incurs.
Yeah, second.
Okay, so we're gonna approve items A through H.
And just as a comment, a number of these items are dealing with our health insurance for next year for the employees and a Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and again, staff did an outstanding job in working with the carriers to get us the best available coverage at a very, very reasonable cost, so kudos to staff.
Kristin did an outstanding job of getting ahead of this early, following up on it and staying on top of it to get us the best rate she did.
She did a very good job.
Yeah, amen to that. Okay, roll call.
Was there a second? I didn't hear the second.
Yes, I second it.
Okay. President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Oppenheim.
Aye.
Tacaoka.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item I, approval and passage of ordinance 2019-145, an ordinance authorizing approval of a software license and services master agreement with Cab Connect in an amount not to exceed 6,000 out.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I really only pulled this so we could talk about this program for just a minute or two in public again to remind everybody of the benefit of this. If you recall back on September 16th at one of the Board meetings, we came to the Board and discussed the need to make certain changes in our senior transportation system, partly because of the retirement of one of our drivers.
Right.
And partly because the, the transportation system did not serve the needs of, of the seniors as it was originally designed 20-some years ago. At that time, we discussed several other options, including vouch, excuse me, including vouchers, continuing the program, hiring addition, additional drivers, et cetera, and we said that we would get back to the Board with different options. In your packet over the weekend, your transmittal packet, and again, in the, in the Board Agenda here, is our recommendation, and we are recommending going with a company called Cab Connect for the implementation of a swipe card system for seniors. And essentially what this is, is a credit card sized card with a magnetic reader on the back that's issued to each and every senior aged 62 years of age and older, or any person with a permanent disability over the age of 18. And what happens is they will be, they will be loaded with 16 rides per month, and they'll automatically be reloaded each year, I'm sorry, each month. And there are several participating cab companies, 303 and American Cab, and instead of trying to schedule the bus using, with one vehicle for dozens of seniors that need to use a service, they'll be able to call one of these two cab companies, they will dispatch a cab and take them to their destination, and when the, at the end of the ride, they will swipe this card through and they will be given a credit for $4 for each one of these trips. That allows them two round trips a week, all the way through the whole year, like I said, as the card gets reloaded. And checking with the cab companies, almost all the rides from any point in Vernon Hills to any other point in Vernon Hills, including Condell Hospital, is between $4 and no more than eight. For most of the rides that the seniors have scheduled, based on our past scheduling over the past year, most of the rides should be in the $4 to $5 range, so many of the seniors will get their transportation for free, or they may have to do a copay of a dollar or two depending on where they're going. So having said that, this is the system we're proposing, it's a software license agreement, we don't have to own anything. We are billed each month by the cab company only for the rides that are used. There's a 35 cent swipe charge and $50 administration fee charged. We anticipate that for the administration of this program, it's probably gonna be under $3,000. We put not to exceed six just because knowing how we know things, things tend to run over a little bit. The subsidizing, if every senior used it, that was, that has used the senior bus last year for transportation, I think we have 28 or 29 seniors that used it on a regular basis, if every one of them used all 16 trips each month for the whole year, our total cost would be about $12,500, and we have approximately $40,000 budgeted for the senior transportation system. Even if we double the number of seniors, because this will become a very popular event, we're still far under what we budgeted, and of course, we'll rebudget next year. The only other additional thing is the bus will stay, remain in operation until the end of this fiscal year, and it's being used for medical transports only, for doctor's visits, hospital visits, or doctor prescribed therapy. I just thought that this was such a good program, it was worth mentioning one more time at a Board meeting for those who may not have heard about it. You can get applications at our front desk, they're also available online on the Village's website, as is information on how to get and use the cards.
Great.
Thank you.
Good job, Chief, or Mark. Mr. Manager.
Motion to approve item I of the omnibus agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Oppenheim.
Aye.
Tacaoka.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries. Unfinished additional business, approval and passage of ordinance 2019-144, an ordinance prohibiting cannabis business establishments in the Village of Vernon Hills, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve? So made.
Second.
Motion is second. What, oh, you wanna say something? Trustee Cook.
I, I just wanna clarify a couple things, because I have heard from a number of people and, and we had that rather large meeting. Cannabis will be legal in Vernon Hills, cuz it's gonna be legal in Illinois. This does nothing to stop that. In addition, I was very disappointed that just a few weeks after our Town Hall meeting, Representative Edley Allen held a Town Hall meeting on vaping. Now, if you're not familiar with vaping, it's taking propylene glycol and mixing it with nicotine and heating it into an aerosol and then inhaling it. Nicotine, according to federal government, the third most addictive drug out there behind cocaine and heroin. And they are marketing this to people under 21 a lot, they're even making the e-cigarettes look now like a USB, they look just like a USB drive, a parent's not gonna notice the difference between it. But there was, nobody showed up for that meeting. There were almost as many people presenting as there were people in the audience. In addition to that, and Chief, we, we talked earlier, there's an organization in, they're based out of Lincolnshire, Stan Strong, but they have a, a group there. If people really wanna, and this is coming from somebody who, trust me, I've spent over 30 years talking about drug education to the students of our community. I've been to more snowflakes than you can imagine, and red ribbon weaks, and been to a number of funerals of former students from heroin overdose, and tried to explain to teenagers why drugs are bad. So please trust me, I think my record speaks for itself in terms of trying to do what I can for the youth of this community. And if you're serious about this kinda stuff, I think you need to look at alcohol and vaping and anything that's illegal under 21. And Stan Strong has a, a tip line, do you wanna mention a little bit about it, please?
Certainly. So Stan Strong Coalition is a, a group that covers all the communities that feed into Stevenson High School, so that's Vernon Hills, Buffalo Grove, and Lincolnshire, and they've recently put out a program called Tip 411, and essentially, if you go to Stan Strong's website, or you can download the app, but it's a very simple way for members of the community that suspect they see illegal underage use of alcohol or illegal drug use to anonymously notify the police of what they're seeing. Now, we would ask that members of the public don't use this when they see an emergency or life-threatening behavior in action, that's 911. But this is simply texting 123tip, and then to, the, the number you text is 847411, and you use this text, 123tip, and you'll be in touch with another person on that, on that text message. That is not the police, and, and you are completely anonymous, that goes through a third-party server, we have no way of finding out who's sending that message. But that's a way to, to report to the police suspicious activity and remain anonymous. So we wanna inform the community about that and make sure people are comfortable doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So, just so we're aware, this, this whole opt-in, opt-out thing, marijuana will be legal. State of Illinois made it legal. There's nothing we can do to stop that.
Okay. There's a motion, oop. Trustee Tacaoka.
Yeah, you know, just, you know, I, I'm still hearing things out there, you know, relative to this whole opt-out, it's, I mean, it's a pretty big subject across, you know, a bunch of villages in Lake County. But at the end of the day, you know, over 700 residents here voiced their opinion for us to opt-out, this was not our, you know, unilateral decision here. I mean, you know, we had a very powerful statement from Dr. Gilliam, I mean, why do people come to Vernon Hills? Because of our high school, he runs our high school, and, you know, I thought his statement was very compelling as to why, you know, perhaps Vernon Hills should opt-out. And you know what? Out of all the states across the whole country that have marijuana legal, over 70% of the towns in those states opt-out. So what we're doing is nothing extraordinary, and it's really just basing it upon the feedback we've got from the community, and I just wanted to make that statement before we move forward.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, is there a motion? Who, do we got the motion and a second? Okay, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Oppenheim.
Aye.
Tacaoka.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Any new business or communication to come before the Board?
Yes, sir. We had a little discussion earlier, you and I, about the veto session, there is a proposal to create a unified pension program for first responders, police and, and fire. And while on the, the face of it, it seems to be innocuous enough, there's a lot of detail that hasn't been shared, and so there's some concern there. Plus also, from this chair, I've seen a certain level of inequity in how some pensions are dispersed and how certain programs are managed and/or put in place by state mandate and by court mandate, specifically PSEBA, along with the way certain evidence is allowed and not allowed with regard to line-of-duty pensions being awarded. And I see this as an opportunity to, in my view, right some wrongs, and that has not been addressed as part of this, and I'm looking for consensus from my brethren here, whether or not we would like to send a, a, a letter to the legislators and the legislative leaders and the governor to review, take this opportunity to review what I believe are certain inequities with regard to first responder pension system that currently are in place. And I'm looking for, I guess, feedback from my brethren on this.
How about a sisterin?
Brethren and sisterin.
Yeah, well, I think brethren is a neutral term.
Oh, okay.
They, they use it with regard to the Supreme Court, and there's three females on the Supreme Court, so.
All right. Well, you know, yeah, this is something we've, we've looked into more than once, and, you know, it's been discussed at, you know, any number of joint gatherings of, you know, local elected officials, whether it be at the municipal level or at the state level, and, you know, if you, if we wanna send out, what, a resolution or a letter to whoever we think, you know, can help us, that's great, because, yeah, PSEBA, the actual definition is very loose, and it's, you know, enforced by the police board, and the police board, you know, has more swarms on there than, than citizens, and, you know, people that apply, even in our town, which we've had a few, I think we've had four in the last few years, you know, they've gotten, you know, sanctioned to, they're retired, and now they're getting, you know, their monthly benefit and it's tax-free. And then on top of that, then we gotta go and, you know, actually provide all the health insurance, which isn't something we really reserve for. So, yeah, it's a problem, it's not just a problem here. I mean, I've heard, you know, in some towns, they've had 10 or 12, you know, duty disability type cases going on simultaneously, so, yeah, I mean, by all means, I, I'd certainly support it, so.
Can I ask, do you, you agree that it's, that it's beneficial to consolidate these?
From everything I've heard, again, the, the devil is in the details, but everything that's been transmitted to me says that there's going to be a cost savings that'll be shared by everyone. With that being said, though, it's my understanding, and our accounting firm can give me feedback along with the Village Manager and the Chief, but I think we have one of the best-run and most viable pension programs of any other, any community in the state. I think we're in the top tier with regard to being funded. I believe our costs, our administrative costs are exceedingly low on a percentage basis, and that, yeah, we'll maybe save a few additional dollars by this, but it's not going to help us or generate any great windfall. With that being said, though, any savings is a, a savings that can be put into the pension fund, and instead of $2,001, we may only have to put in $2,500,000 the next go-round. So, yeah, I guess that's, that's a good thing, but I'm looking at this as an opportunity to reform a, a system that, to my mind, has kind of gone awry. It's not, it's in, it's not beneficial to the taxpayers as it stands, and I don't think it's beneficial to the rank-and-file of the first responders. Again, someone can make an argument against that, but that's my position.
Okay. Or you wanna get?
You wanna have staff look into exactly, you know, what, yeah.
Yes, we can do that if, if you prefer a resolution, we can, we can put together a draft resolution.
So I'm, I'm still unclear what this resolution would be, are we saying that we don't approve of it, the consolidation in the current state, or only approve of it if, if they tackle PSEBA, which I don't think is gonna happen in the next two weeks or whatever it is?
I don't think we have a choice on the, the whole pension issue, didn't we discuss that earlier, Chief, Mark?
Yes, sir, we did.
You know, we have to opt-in. You don't have a choice in that, then.
If, if the legislature goes forward with this, we'll be forced.
Right, right, no, but I'm, I'm saying, our, our resolution is only to give support to that House or Senate bill, whatever it is, 616 or something, and as they asked us to do as a community to, to, to say that, that's something that we want, so I'm still unclear, is this some?
I think we're.
Those are a couple of the details I'd like more information.
Are you saying we don't want this, or you're not sure, or you're, it's a little late to add contingencies, I think?
Well, no, I'm, well, that's, I guess, what I'm saying. The bill, no one, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but no one has seen the legislation. It's a shell bill still. So how it all, the sausage-making process down in Springfield is even uglier than the sausage-making process in Washington. And this is an opportunity for us to go on the record and maybe make some headway. Maybe not this go-around, but at least have this front of mind or on the front burner that, hey, guys, we're still waiting for you to fix some of the issues with PSEBA. And how about establishing medical boards to establish line-of-duty as opposed to non-trained individuals making those decisions? You know, non-medically trained individuals making those decisions? You know, that's where I'm coming from is, you know, you have an opportunity here for complete pension reform. You're only reforming a small bit.
Right.
Well, why don't we have staff, you know, see what they can come up with, and we'll discuss it at the next meeting, you know?
Correct.
Which will probably be after...
That's too late.
Yeah.
Well, it's, I mean, they're, they're voting on this shortly, so they had asked for us to... They asked for us to support this and, and perhaps passing a resolution in, in that support. My, I, I, I'm just wondering, are you throwing the baby out with the bathwater kind of thing by saying we don't want any of it? If, if you're not going to give the support because they don't have PSEBA reform, which would be great, but it's not in, it doesn't, didn't look like it was in the, on the table there. We didn't read about that at all, so, so I'm just wondering where, where, where are we headed with this versus...
I'm just looking at this as another opportunity. We've talked about this over the last 10 years.
Right.
Quite a... I'm, I'm thinking we go back about 10 years.
At least, yeah, at least.
With, with really being engaged in this.
If anything, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no. So this is just one more opportunity to, to shine light on what every municipality fears is a significant fiscal problem that they may in fact be encountering in the future. Just shining a light on it one more time.
Well, we can't do anything about it for two weeks anyway, so why don't we let staff come up with some information for us and...
We, we don't have to do anything on pension, to be honest with you, do we? I mean, you're gonna...
It's gonna happen.
Yeah, it's gonna happen.
They were just asking for, for our support in that regard. I'm just wondering if we should tailor a letter to the Director of the Municipal League, Mr. Cole, and say, why, why didn't you include PSEBA reform in terms of all of the things that you were looking at?
Well, then we can get out sooner than later than I would think.
Right.
Yeah. We'll draft something. I'll send it via email to you. Give me your comments.
Yeah. We'll get it out of here this week.
Right.
Okay. Is there any other new business or communication to come before the board? Yes.
Anyone want to talk about trick-or-treating?
Yeah, sure. Did you get a good haul?
Village manager is close to you. Well, I'm proud of our board for, and the, and the village staff for, for making that decision. I was part of the decision, but I think it was a good one. And we had some of the data to show the number of people, even on Facebook, that were supportive of it. There were a number of naysayers about the decision to postpone trick-or-treating and why, why would you change Halloween? We didn't change anything. We just changed the communication of when the expectation is that families will be around for the kids to come by and get some free candy. But Saturday was great. I stayed home for three hours and gave out more candy than, than I have in many years past, and it was a lot of fun.
Next year, trick-or-treating will be on Saturday.
So, is it, is it actually, Halloween is on Saturday? Okay.
It's leap year, so...
Next two years are on the weekend, so, so it is what it is. But, but I think it was a, a good decision, and there was a great turnout, and people were very appreciative and, and...
Yeah, I, no question about it. My neighborhood was, had, had the most kids ever.
And, and in line with what David said, I'm very proud of Carrie, because I deferred my vote to her, because she has little kids.
I do, yeah. Well, they were upset, but we went to Buffalo Grove and did it that day, because we were going to be out of town that weekend. And Alex was mad, because kids kept interrupting his watching college football. So he gave out a little bit of candy, but not too much candy, so we still have a bunch of candy. But I, I don't care. Yeah.
He's gonna have to figure out something next year, because it will be Saturday next year.
Yeah, it will be. So, but then I'll be home, and I'll take care of it.
But I, I guess, leave it saying it's not our intention to change it every year, but I reserve the right that whenever there's inclement weather coming, that, that I think it's a good idea to do what we did.
The old health, safety, and welfare pledge.
Absolutely.
And it worked out. It was an awful day, on Halloween.
I, I was working in the office, and I had patients coming to tell me that on their drive-in, they saw cars on the, on the side of the, the street in the ditch. And, and some of the patients who lived elsewhere said they did trick-or-treat, and it was slippery, and they fell down and things like that, so...
Okay. Any other new business or communication? Is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting, going to committee at the whole?
And closed session at the end?
There will be a closed session tonight for collective bargaining pursuant to Section 2C2 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn all that.
Second.
Motion to second. All indicate by, can we do an aye vote on this?
Yeah, you can, but for the executive session, we, we need a roll call. Will you make, you'll make another motion at the end of committee at the whole?
Let's just do the roll call.
Okay, all right.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justy Brown.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Zappenheim.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to call the committee at the whole meeting to order. First item, is there a motion to approve the committee at the whole meeting minutes of October 15th, 2019?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Comments, questions, deletions, corrections? If not, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justy Takaoka.
Epstein.
Marport.
Aye.
Zappenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next item is a request for an outdoor dining and seating establishment permit for Salsa Street, Inc., located at 1240 East Highway 45, Suite 100.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can just give a brief summary. We already heard that Salsa Street will be located in the space formerly occupied by Rhodey Mediterranean and the Vernon Hills Town Center. They're proposing to have nine tables with a seating capacity of 36 customers on the north sidewalk, and that's shown on the screen in front of you. They would have a gate around the perimeter of the outdoor dining area to separate customers who might be consuming alcohol from the general public, and there'd be a self-closing, self-latching gate on the east side. I'll also mention that they would maintain a six-foot width between the curb and the fence for, you know, for pedestrians using the sidewalk. The next slide, on this slide, north is actually to the left, gives you a little more detail on the layout of the patio. And then here's a picture of what the, what the fence will look like. It's a metal fence, and it'll have boxes that will allow for seasonal plantings of flowers and such. So for tonight, if the board feels that the outdoor dining request is appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare a resolution approving the outdoor dining license. And once again, the owners of Salsa Street are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Justy Schultz.
Um, I'm looking at the, the drawing, and I'm seeing those cars nosed right up to it. And I know that the nose of my minivan only goes over the curb maybe 12 inches, but if I back up, I can probably get two and a half feet, and that would potentially take out that fence. Do we have enough set back there?
It, it's, it's six feet. Looking at this, those, if you look at the plan, the...
Well, I'm looking at the, the, the picture. All right, I'm looking at the, right, I'm looking at that.
This is just to give you a general idea of where the patio is located. The next slide provides a little better detail for you. The, the tables are three feet wide, and then there'd be three feet between, for the aisle, between the tables. So that's nine feet. The fence with the planters, another foot, that's 10 feet, and the sidewalk is 16 feet deep, so that leaves approximately six feet between the railing and the curb.
Okay. I'm good.
In that picture that you showed earlier of the fence, that wasn't actually the facility... That's, that's just showing a sample fence, because there, there are no columns here.
Yeah, correct. There's, that's, that's...
And there's no overhang.
...the fence at their other location that they have. It'll be the same fence at this location, but, yeah, as you stated, there are no columns on this building. It's just clear 16 feet of sidewalk. So again, we're just, if, if the board thinks the outdoor license is appropriate, staff should be directed to prepare a resolution approving the outdoor dining license, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your packet.
Motion to extend.
So made.
Second.
Motion to second. Uh, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justy Takaoka.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Zappenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next is workers' compensation, property liability, and other insurance renewals. Who's grabbing this one?
I'd like to, if I may.
Yeah.
Please do.
Ed.
The, the village utilizes broker, Alliant-Mezaro Insurance Services to help us evaluate different risks we have for the village and to transfer those risks to either commercial insurance or to risk pools. The renewal for the village for 2020, in terms of the property, general law enforcement, employment practices, most of our lines was very favorable, and the premium was actually down a little bit. The director, Ann, had them roll the sales tax interruption policy in with another policy, so that actually saved us a little bit of money in that, in those lines. The only area where we have some complication is in the workers' comp area, and that's a function of our claims history. The insurance pool that we currently use gave us a renewal quote, but it wasn't really competitive. And so our broker obtained three quotes from ICRMT, which is a risk pool, Illinois County's Risk Management Trust. And there are two options there that I think are worthy of consideration, and I think both of them would be a, a good choice. It's, more comes down to philosophy. The first option on the top of page 63 of the packet is a fixed-cost option for the village, which essentially you're paying a premium of about $531,000, and you have no risk of the cost going higher if you have unfavorable claims. That is, if you have more people injured than projected. The second option has $100,000 deductible, so you would pay the first $100,000 of any claim, and the premium associated with that option is $283,000. So you have to look at what you think your claims are going to be. And so if you look based on our recent history, the consultant is telling us that's about $233,000. So if you add the 283 in premium and the 233,000 in projected claims, that comes out to about $516,000. So the choice before you is, do you want to pay $531,000, know that that's your cost and, and not worry about it? Or do you want to pay $516,000 potentially if you have average losses? So it's really not a big difference in cost. Based on the, the history of the village, you know, we had, we're coming off of a policy where we have no deductibles, so that's kind of what we're used to doing. You know, I think it's more of a philosophy than anything, but if you like the certainty, the $531,000 fixed-price contract is not a bad way to go. I think regardless of what option you select, I think the village needs to step up a little bit. Some of our prevention efforts, some of our loss control, maybe be a little bit more involved in the claims handling process, because doing that on the front end will help control how the claims develop over time. So I don't have a real firm recommendation, but, you know, I, I think either one's a good choice, and if you want to be kind of on the safe side, I think the $531,000 fixed-price contract is a good, good option for you. And I'd be happy to take any questions any of the board may have.
Doctor Zappenheim.
I'm a little confused about the statement in the transmittal, which said further option two, um, option two being the one where we have $100,000 deductible. Says further option two might change employee perceptions as initial claims costs are coming directly out of village finances, possibly encouraging less costly utilization. Do you think that really is, is that a deterrent for them when they see that we're paying the first $100,000?
I would like to think so. I would, it's someone, something like, at home, if you know you have to pay for something, first dollar, you kind of think about it a little bit differently sometimes than if some other, you know, insurance company or pool is paying for it. It's a psychological thing. I'm not sure exactly how real that is and how that affects individuals, but I think there is a different mentality when you know it's coming out of the village's pocket versus an insurance company. I will share with you that I served up in Lake County on a jury at one point for someone who was injured, and nine of the people in the room felt that because the insurance company was paying something, it was okay to award it, whereas if the person themselves had to pay that cost, the perception was very different. And I was part of that, and I was in the, it doesn't matter if you have insurance, it's either the right thing to do or it's not. And so to what extent that applies to our workforce, I can't say, but I think there is sometimes a mentality difference when you know that you're paying for something versus some third party is paying for it.
So, so do you think that would affect our claims experience and therefore our costs in the future, several years down the line? Because we have fewer claims, because people did not...
I'm saying that could be a benefit if you decide that option.
I have a comment. So Roger, I would ask you, since, you know, this is your line of business, I mean, based upon, you've been here a long time. What is your perspective on it? I mean...
Well, I, you know, I, I think you...
Tenure here.
You know. Are these claims going to go away? Chief?
No.
They're not going to go away.
If it's no's, we're going to risk falling on, you know, our police officers respond to traffic crashes, you know, uncleared streets, and they slip and fall. That happened twice last winter.
I mean, we can evaluate again next year, you know, but in this instance, it's here. I think this is the best way to go with the guaranteed cost.
With the fixed.
Yeah.
I was kind of confused with the math. You've got the 233 plus the $100,000. Shouldn't that, are you saying that our expected claims are 333, because we're paying the first $100,000?
Not, not quite. What I'm saying is that if you add up all the deductibles that you end up paying in a typical year, that would total $233,000.
All right, so...
Under $100,000, with $100,000 deductible. So it might be three claims, it might be eight claims.
So you're saying then the total claims would be 333, not 233? No. We're paying the first...
We, we don't, we don't know what the total claims would be. What we know is what we would pay. So if we had a claim, for example, for $150,000, we would pay 100, and then the insurance policy would pay the 50.
Well, I guess, what's the 233? Is the 233 the total we're going to pay out?
That's correct. Our estimated average deductible...
After, after the first $100,000.
No, within the first $100,000.
That is the deductible.
Right.
So there were several claims, one of them was for 100, 150,000, so we paid 100. But there was another one that was only 50,000. We paid all 50 of that, and there was another one for...
We paid all 50 of that, and there was another one for-
Right, but the total that we would pay out is 333.
No, you would be paying the 233 plus the insurance premium of the 283.
But the claims filed with us would be 333, because we're paying $100,000 already?
No, no, I-
I'm sorry.
Let me put, I'll put together a chart for you that shows that. I understand your question.
Yeah, I'm-
It's a little confusing, I'm sorry, in the way it's presented, but essentially, the 233 is the total of everything you paid within that deductible. It doesn't tell you-
The $100,000 is the first $100,000 of the 233. There's only an additional 133 on top of that.
Well, then our out-of-pocket is 233.
I'll put together a little chart for you. I understand your question, I'll put a little chart together.
I've, I've got it clear.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's no stop-loss policies available, which I asked about to, like, cap it, because let's face it, we get five claims, you know, on, you know, with the $100,000 deductible, and and three of these claims we got now, they all exceed that dollar amount. Are we going to, you know, you could absorb, you could get five hits, you know what I mean? $100,000, so all of a sudden, we're rolling the dice a little too much, you know?
So the stop-loss is essentially option one, where where we're just maxing?
No, well, the guaranteed cost is just it, you know?
Right.
But you're saying if there were like an option three or option two with a maximum out-of-pocket?
Yeah, well, with the $100,000 deductible, there's no maximum.
Right.
Which is a, it's a problem, so. Staff, do you have any comments?
It just goes back to the fact that insurance is legalized gambling, I mean.
So are we looking for-
Make a motion to-
We're looking for direction from the board, and we will prepare the necessary, we will make arrangements with the insurance company to get the appropriate policy drafted for your signature and approval at the next board meeting. So, yes-
Motion to direct staff to pursue a fixed-cost-
Option one.
Option-one proposal.
That's the $0 one, correct?
That's the $0 deductible.
Correct, okay.
531-206 is the premium.
Do you need that in a motion?
No, that's just direction, we'll bring the contract.
Okay, you're bringing it back.
Yeah, we'll bring the contract before the board.
Okay.
Do we all need to weigh in on that?
No.
All right. Was there a motion to-
At their opportunity.
There a motion to adjourn and go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining?
So made. Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Brown?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Marport?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Motion carried. Yeah, no, that's fine.